Alright, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the thirteenth of September twenty twenty-three at six oh five P M. We'll do our Commissioner reports first. I don't have anything this week. If any of the other Commissioners do, go ahead and speak up now. I don't see anybody speaking, so uh nice to have you again, Justin. And if you have any questions during this time period, just, you know, let us know and we'll get moving on. Our staff reports?
Okay, I'll go first and then Zach's gonna go. So um just some updates for the Planning Commission. We're gonna be working on a work program which we will be presenting probably in November. That outlines the next steps after the Comprehensive Plan. So in a nutshell, just a reminder, we're closing in on completing the draft of this interim Comprehensive Plan. We will be having hearings on the document in October for the Plant Commission, November for the City Council with adoption in November. Um we will then move into a phase of updating our zoning map and the regulations that go with zoning. Pursuant to some of those policy changes, but holistically, there are a number of areas that we need to do fixes. And first and foremost, some of those fixes have to do with changes that happened in the twenty-three legislative session. Which directly impacts our current planning. At the state level, the timelines that Zach and I are required to meet to process zoning applications whereas amended this session. And we have to go in and amend our procedures as to to ensure that we are providing the appropriate timelines. We are also going to be updating some of the elements for consistency, like things like notice. Discovered that due to the age of the code and some omissions over time. That, for example, it doesn't clearly identify what the notice requirements for a short subdivision is, or how to process a finding site plan. That's a type of subdivision that you do specifically exclusively for commercial and industrial property. Um we also will be updating our residential code, uh which I'll talk about here in a moment with regards to the grant that that we're working to submit by Friday of this week. And we will be also updating our commercial and industrial zone. So going through cleaning that um omissions, errors, inconsistencies. And to the extent that we are able to, we will be updating our residential. Uh the goal is to begin that work after this GMA Comprehensive Plan is adopted. This is a workload issue. Uh because we have to get that plan, you know, done. And then we'll move on to these development regulations and maps with the goal of having all that body of work. Occur after the first of the year and to be adopted no later than the end of June of next year. Why is that significant for everything except for the residential code? Because the next actual state required Comprehensive Plan is coming down road. In the state requirements for growth management, we have to have a Comprehensive Plan adopted by twenty twenty-six. In three years seems like a lot. Um but we essentially would be beginning that process toward the end of twenty twenty-four, but really most of that work will happen in 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 late twenty twenty-four to early twenty twenty-six because we're required to have it done actually by June of twenty twenty-six. We don't have the full calendar year. It typically takes about two years to do a comp plan. And the legislature passed significant additional requirements in the last two years for agencies to address. Those included that not only do we have population allocations, which have been part and parcel with GMA, so the city gets a number of people we're supposed to plan for. We will also get a specific allotment of housing by income from market rate to unhoused. That means homeless. So we will have to be doing work on strategies on to identify how we will accommodate that housing allocation. There were also significant environmental changes that are required to be incorporated in the plan under a bill called the Sustainability Act. And that covers everything from we have to have a greenhouse gas emission reduction plan. We have to adopt multimodal levels of service, which is transit, biking and walking. And we're actually doing part of that now with this plan. A wild land, wild land fire interface plan and American visibility uh act accessibility plan. And a whole host of other things that we will have to do for that. And many of these are brand new. Uh agencies that are already working on the periodic update that update that's due actually next year are struggling to do this, so we don't have a lot of work, existing work to back up. So basically, the timeline in this work point for a program is moving from this comp plan, doing some interim development regulations, and then beginning the next complian. The tricky part of that is that in the new state law, we only have six months to update our development regulations because the new reg, the new requirements of the act is to show a homework example. So we actually have to show in our code how we make it happen. So when we get to that point in twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, we will be not only doing the comp plan, but we will making some adjustments to our development regulations, trying to mean them in order to show that we can achieve the housing requirements that are moving forward. So a lot of work coming down the pike, strap in, sit down. We'll be using the Planning Commission. What I really love about about Mark is Mark always talks about how since Zach and I have joined the staff, it's always busy. First, for the Planning Commission, and we're gonna fulfill that bonus.
Be careful what you wish for.
Be careful what you wish for. Um so along those lines, I'm right now working on a grant application to help pay for the residential code updates. And we just briefed the City Council this last Monday on this grant application. So some key changes that occurred in a House Bill eleven-ten, and it was one of actually two bills, three bills that directly affect us. Number one, it requires that by twenty twenty-six, every residential lot in the city will be required to have development regulations zoning that would allow two units per lot. Number two, we have to allow both the opportunity for an internal and an external accessory dwelling unit on every residential lot. And number three, we are required to allow for six of nine different types of missing middle housing in our areas that are predominantly single family developed at this time. So it isn't just single family zone, but it's anywhere where there's predominantly single family housing. So what that means is that we will be required to allow six of nine um in all of those zones. So that's duplex, triplex, fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex. Um clustered, single family housing, uh courtyard apartments and stacked apartments. Uh I think that was eight, but there's there's nine there that were required to allow. So this grant that we have the opportunity to do would pay for the work to update our zoning under that those new bills for missing middle. Uh it's not a whole lot of money, but what basically our our goal is starting in January through next year, we'll be working through you and Assistant Advisory Group to work through any minor amendments. We need to do the comp plan and actually create a new residential code that meets these new requirements. So by the end of twenty twenty-four, the goal is we will be compliant, will be compliant early. And kind of the theme on this is we can do it in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six with no money. Or we can get a little bit of grant money and we can do it now between now and in mid twenty twenty-five. Uh we will also be considering a grant by the end of October for that very big sustainability um bill that I just mentioned about the greenhouse gas emissions and the ADA accessibility plan. That's a significantly larger grant that's available to us. Um so the missing middle ones only worth fifty thousand dollars. The sustainability grant is worth half a million dollars. So um we'll be working on trying to see if we can get it together because they only gave us forty-five days to apply for these grants. Get it together enough to actually apply for those grants. Otherwise, again, this will burden will fall on us to prepare it, and we don't have other funding to help us pay for the substantial work that would be involved in like calculations of greenhouse gas emission sources and carbon footprints and how you mitigate that and just the whole nine yards. So that in a nutshell is kind of where we've been focusing for the past couple of weeks. This last meeting is kind of whether we're ready or not, we're having to gear up uh to get ready for these these next thirty-six months of of work that we're doing. So any questions about the bills, the grants, or uh basically getting a three-year work plan?
I don't have any questions, but I definitely look forward to doing work and making the city better.
Thank you. And I think I've talked enough. Thank you, Zach.
It's eleven eighty-one, by the way, the House Bill number, um in case anyone wanted to look at.
That's for the sustainability one.
Yeah, it's eleven eighty-one. But you mentioned.
Eleven ten, eleven ten is the density, eleven eighty-one is the sustainability.
You mentioned the eleven ten, so I wanted to.
Yeah.
Mention that too. Um I just wanted to quickly go over two quick things. Um one, I I wanted to show you that art that we're going to be wrapping the utility box in. We wouldn't got a high-res scan of it today. So I happened just to have it on me. Figured he might be interested. My screen sharing is paused. Oh, I need a new app. Never mind. I need a new app to open it. So anyway, I'll I'll email you guys. You can take a look at it there. I'm sorry. I'm not installing a new app and wasting everybody's time. The other thing I wanted to show you is we actually launched a significant update to our GIS system on Friday. Um this is our new GIS page. Um so we have two different items here. One is the open data portal. Um so if anyone is ever looking, typically this is other jurisdictions or state agencies looking to access our data. Um all of it is available here. Our active permits portal is still available here as well. So you can go take a look and see what's going on in the city and where things are at. But for this, if you wanted to say you wanted a copy of our um the fire hydrants in the city, cool, you can click it here. And it'll think about it for a minute. And then it'll come up eventually and it's loading and it's thinking. And it'll pop up here in just a second. There it is. Um it gives you all of your data set usages, all that. You can download it to use it offline. There's also a link on the bottom there. Um to use it within your virtual map, so you don't have to download it. You can just link to it. Um but this catalog has all of our data sets that we use. There's not too many, um but they are significant. This um we launched this page about two years ago. And in the two years that it has been up, it has been viewed over ten thousand times. So it's actually something that people are using, which is really nice when you spend a lot of time on something and people actually use it. So yay. Um the other item that's a little more forward facing is our new uh GeoData mapping application. Um this will look familiar because I brought it up in previous meetings because I've been kind of using it and as, you know, just getting used to it. But it is fully launched now. Um and there are a couple of updates from the previous version that I wanted to touch on real quick. Sorry, this this poor computer is not used to running like five programs at a time, so.
Sorry, sir. I had some taxes for the department. I just didn't deliver your stuff to the courts.
Yeah.
I gave you the package of truckers, but I don't want to know where it went.
Sure. Alrighty. So all of our layers are now organized a little bit differently. They're organized by categories, so utility, transportation, environmental, development overlays, boundaries and planning. Um we do link directly to Spokane County's parcel data. So as parcel data gets changed, because when when we do like a boundary line adjustment or a subdivision, that actually happens at the county level, we approve it, but we don't do the actual change. But as those changes happen at the county, it's refreshed live every five minutes. Um nice thing about these is we now have owner information on all these parcels. So you can go in if you're curious about, you know, who owns it, or if you want some additional information on your neighbors or anything like that. It's all there. Um I added these these new um tags just because it's nice when you're doing this to to have your addresses there. Um so that's a significant update. Our our previous version didn't have ownership information on it. Uh so this will save you a trip over to scout. Um we did do some significant updates to our our main utility layers, which are the reclaimed water and sewer. So beyond just adding where the new additions are, um both lines have been integrated with uh uh plan data. So here's a sewer line here that's running off of what is the street? Between airlifts. Now let's go down to white tip. So this is a sewer line that's running on white tip here. And if you're curious or you need some really good information, you can actually just click on the more info. And it will take you to the actual water plan. So we do get a lot of requests for these specific plans. Um they're in big boxes over at the Public Works Department. Um so they were really kind enough to scan these in and were able to link them to our individual sections um on our GIS. The city is not one hundred percent covered with plans. There are still some that we don't have uh in the system yet. So here's here's one for the water line as well. So all the water, the reclaimed water and the sewer lines all have um what we have available. They have plans in there. So that's gonna be really nice for developers. Uh we we get questions on those a whole lot and it'll uh hopefully make that a little bit easier for them. Um the last thing I wanted to kind of go over here is we did add a number of new tools. Um actually, let's let's find a good area here. How about down in Traditions here? Sorry, if I'm making you guys sick driving here. Um so the new tools are down here in the bottom left corner. Uh some of these have existing, so your your legend, it's always there if you need it. Um the measurement tool is a little different, but it essentially does exactly what you think it does. It allows you to measure distance vertically. Or also areas, but it allows you to go and if you wanted the hect acres of your lot, go for it. Go nuts, have fun. Um but the two fun new tools, the first one is the select, um and I'm gonna have to move this bar up here for a second. Here we go. So the select tool allows you to select and export specific features. So say we wanted to look at these, I don't want the park. So we wanted to know what's going on with these five houses here off of Meadow Court. We can select those, and then there's this little bar down here. And it gives you the tax parcel and the address information. Just go to show me the selected records. Gives you all the fun information that you want on those. This allows you to export to C uh CSV, which is an Excel sheet. Um it also allows you, if you really want to, you can go in here and explore two additional items like GeoJSON, uh which is a GIS layer. So you can take this, grab it, download it, and then put it into your own GIS system if you just wanted these five layers. This also works with water lines, utility lines, any of our layers we have in there. Uh but there are a couple of other fun tools like statistics. So for this, like if you're wondering, like, okay, well, we have these five lots. I'm thinking about buying these five lots. I want to know, like, how much is that actually worth? Or how much acreage is that? So you can go to land value, and this is again, it's based off of the county data, right? Um so according to them, this is just the land, by the way. This is doesn't count the houses, so the raw land. Okay, so these five are worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're all worth seventy thousand because of the average maximum. So you can get all sorts of, you know, acreage. Oh, okay. So some of values. So you can get some fun information here if you're looking uh to do that. The select tool is new and it's pretty helpful. The other tool that's new that's kind of helpful is the draw tool. And it does exactly what you think it does. It draws. It allows you to place um items to say, again, you're looking at this and you're like, okay, well, you know, we're thinking of putting in a new sprinkler system, but we were we're wanting to split the cost with our neighbor here. So we're thinking of putting in like something here and here and here and here, but we have to have our sprinkler lines. They'll need to connect, so we can do that. Cool. And then we'll have to do it here and here, and then it'll have to connect back around here, then back to the box. But if we need the box, we gotta have a box. So how about an orange box? Cool, let's do an orange box. There's our box. And you can keep going on and on. Um I was talking to one of our city council members about this a little bit on Monday. And one of the items she was looking at was eventually doing an ADU in your backyard. And this is a tool where you can draw on that ADU. You can measure it out using the measuring tool and essentially have a site plan. I mean, you're gonna want to do a better site plan, but it gives you the basic idea of what that would look like. Um without going to, you know, a high-end graphics um program or something like that um with this, and then you can just, you can print this, and there you go. So that's a fun new tool we have. There are a a series of additional um upgrades and changes. I'm not gonna go into every single one of them, but I just wanted to give you kind of the the fun new stuff that's here. The address are the the fine bars are way faster than it used to be, by the way. So it lagged a little bit. Now it does not. Um so yeah, so those are the two items I wanted to just give everybody a heads up on. The new GIS is there. Please feel free and use it. If you have any issues or questions, if you're using it, feel free to reach out to me directly. That's totally fine. Um and I will, I will get that art to you guys to take a look at. So it's really nice, I promise.
I I actually have a question slash concern.
Sure.
Is there is there any concern that bad actors could use particularly the sys- the system data where sewer lines run and and that kind of stuff? You know, there's just uncontrolled, unmonitored access versus somebody that needs to request, hey, I need this information. Oh, okay. What do you want that for? I, you know, it's too many years of government training, I'm sure.
Sure.
Um make me a bit you know, worrisome about that kind of stuff, but there's a lot of data there. I mean, critical infrastructure data is there for anybody who wants it.
Yeah, um with public records requests, um and Heather, you may correct me, do did we have to do that to provide a reason for a public records request, or can they just provide the public records request?
Yeah.
So the data is available one way or the other.
It's that there's.
Yeah, so if they wanted, they could get it.
The only limitation under the state law is that um information gained through a public records request is prohibited for being used for commercial purposes. But there's in practicality, no one to regulate that.
Yeah. So it's it's one of those. Yeah, it's it. They can get it either way. This is saves everybody a step, so.
Well.
Many upsets Jack around.
Zach, those are a pretty cool, pretty cool things you're showing us, though, and I'm sure plenty of people find that useful to be able to go in and uh look at that information and use those new tools you described.
Yeah, we hope so.
Oh yeah, I'm pretty positive people will find that useful.
Well, I I hope they can find it. That's the other piece. It's I hope they find it, but we we. Sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say kind of to to Bill's point, though, it it might be beneficial that it's not easily accessible unless somebody is needing that information, you know, so I I commend you on having it out there, and I don't see an issue with it being kind of difficult to find.
Yeah, the the utility information actually was specifically requested by our Public Works Director. He was looking for a simpler. He may have wanted something, and and we haven't had that conversation about having um only specific people having access to it, but we can definitely talk about it. And if he has an issue, you know, we can, we can always walk it back, so that's not a big deal.
Gotcha.
Sounds like Dawn is here. Oh, no, never mind.
That just says thirteen one twenty.
Alright, um and that that concludes my staff report.
Okay, so we are, we're still waiting on Don, though. We haven't heard any other word on um him tonight, Zach.
Uh let me check real quick. Uh no. But we do have a quorum, so oh, never mind. He's right here.
Perfect, perfect timing.
Yes.
I put you over in one.
Uh I'm just gonna wait.
They did put the owner change shirts at least, just for you guys.
Nice, nice.
Well, perfect timing.
I've heard that name before. I just never seen him.
Coats from the past there, huh?
Nice. Well, let's go ahead. Um since Don showed up, let's get our roll call done. Commissioner Ponce.
Uh President.
Uh Commissioner Collins, President. Commissioner Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Mitchell.
President.
Commissioner Davis.
President.
And Commissioner Dove is excused for tonight. Before we go any further, I would like to do a change of our agenda tonight and add in um I guess we can add it in before our twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan update and discuss the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mark, would you want to add it as a workshop? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, we'll just add it as a workshop, but we'll do it before this Comprehensive Plan and hopefully get it out of the way rather quickly.
Okay.
Can I get some?
So yeah, you'll need a motion to amend the agenda um to add um item A and make item A, item B under workshops.
Can I make that motion, or does it have to be somebody else that makes the motion?
I believe someone else has to make the motion.
Based on what Zach said, I'll say so moved. I don't, you don't have to repeat it.
You you can, yeah, you can say, um I make the motion to. Yeah, so anyway, okay. So Dawn is making a motion.
Um all those are somebody needs a second pass.
Yes, correct.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? I
I.
The I's have it. We'll add that uh into workshops as A and move the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Plan down to be. With that said, let's move into our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, um can I get somebody to make a motion on approval of tonight's agenda with those changes?
Move to approve the agenda with changes as noted.
Check it.
All those in favor? I
I.
The I's have it. The agenda is approved. Um and move on to our minutes. If I can get somebody to make a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
Uh move to approve the minutes from August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Check it. All those in favor? I I can't tell if the I's have it or not.
Uh I I did not hear any nays. Did anyone object? No objections.
Alright, the I's have it. Alright, we don't have any public comment tonight, do we?
Uh we do not, and no one is in the room or in the Zoom lobby.
Okay, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on. We don't have any presentations for tonight and we don't have any public hearings for tonight. So we'll move on to our workshops. Don, Bill, Brenda, you guys were all here when we had the conversation about the, the flag. Justin, I don't know if you've kept up when you're off in your training of what's been going on, but I'll just try to give a brief synopsis of this. One of the things that I've noticed over the years doing this, especially when we have this hybrid model where we're doing Zoom and in person, the pledge of allegiance kind of gets convoluted. You know, we saw it tonight, just it, it's the way it flows from Zoom and in-person meetings. So we had this discussion, I think it was three meetings ago, talking about removing it out, not for anything unpatriotic or anything, but more so we can focus our time on doing the planning commission's business and not doing a pledge of allegiance, just because it takes time and gets convoluted. Do you have any questions or concerns about this?
Uh, no, I understand the purpose behind it. What you guys are saying, my only concern would be is if there's other people in the Zoom or people in the attendance, how they might perceive us not doing that anymore.
That's a very fair assessment. We're kind of following the lead of city council itself, city council, when they do their, their workshops and stuff, they are not doing a pledge of allegiance anymore. They're only doing it during their executive sessions. So it's more along the lines of what we would be doing in our business, like their workshops. So I think the public, if they're okay with our elected officials doing this during their workshops, would be okay with us doing it in our, our own meetings. In not taking away anything from our, our love of country.
No, it makes sense to me.
Bill, Don, Brenda, you guys have anything to add or say?
I don't think so. I think we, we discussed it pretty thoroughly. I, I guess my only reservation or suggestion maybe would be that when we have a scheduled public hearing event, that in those instances that we would, we would do, do that and invite the attendees to participate as well.
I think we could always put that into our commissioner report section if we wanted to. Bill, I don't think that would be an issue if we're concerned about what the public may, may perceive as happening. But I, I understand the concern. I just I honestly just don't see the public feeling disgruntled about this issue. It's just more cleaning up time and making us flow faster.
Well, in general, the public appreciates efficiency, so.
Very much is true. Don, Brenda? Well, I'm going to assume that nobody has anything else they would add. I would like to have a vote on this and just go with our majority opinion here. We have a odd number in a quorum. I feel like it's pretty obvious. I want to remove this pledge of allegiance. I think it just distracts from our business. I think a simple up and down vote would be the, the easiest way. So I'm just going to say I'd like to remove it.
Well, Mark, we'll need a motion for that in a second.
Okay, fair, uh, fair enough. And I, I can't make the motion on this one.
And actually, hold on, before we do that, and not to drag it out, where did we leave it last time? I, I thought.
It was, I believe that the vote was either split or we did not take the vote because we had an even number of participants in the room.
Yeah, it was split because we had an even number and so we just left it as is, but we took out the, 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 oh, I'm drawing a blank on its name right now.
Invocation.
The invocation. We had a majority on that one. So I've just been waiting till we had an odd number of people to bring this up again.
Well, I guess I should go on the record then, because I think I voted to take it away, but my main reason is because of a hybrid model, because it gets so dysfunctional sounding when we have people on Zoom and then live. And as you noted tonight, it was like cutting out and there were probably four different versions going at once. And that is the only reason that I even consider it, but other than that, yeah, that, that's my reason. It's not necessarily for the expediency, but it's just sounds terrible.
The flow.
Yeah. I mean, it just, it's, it's almost, I think I said before, it's almost embarrassing. Just, and I've seen, heard it on other ones too, and it's just yeah, uh, very out of cadence. So there's, there's my piece.
Well, I think Mark's looking for a motion to have the vote, so he can't make it, but somebody else has to.
Brenda, do you want to make your first motion?
So what am I saying? Move to remove the pledge of allegiance?
To vote on removing the pledge of allegiance from our agenda.
Vote on removing the pledge of allegiance from the agenda.
All the, or somebody can second that?
I'll, I'll second it.
All those in favor, I.
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 The eyes have it. We'll take that off on our next meeting. All right, let's get into our real work now. So let's see our comprehensive plan draft update volume two.
Perfect. So if Mr. Zachary Becker will pull up volume two.
Do you want to drive on this one? Is that easier for you?
Well, let me just do an intro and then what we'll do is we'll, we'll go directly to the utility chapter. So since we have participation tonight that we didn't have last week, I'm going to go over just a small summary of what we're doing, what the goal today is and the next steps. And then what I would suggest is that if there's additional need for follow-up, ask specific questions and Zachary and I also will be available after today's meeting too. So just as a recap, the city of Airway Heights is undergoing an amendment to its comprehensive plan to address growth. We've had significant population growth over the last couple of years. And the goal is to ascertain what kind of impacts that would have on our land uses and our services, which include public safety and utilities. We hired a consultant framework who assisted with the development of the draft with a public relations firm to help with engagement. This has produced over a year and a half, essentially two documents, volume one, which we reviewed each chapter with planning commission workshops leading up to a full version of volume one. At the last meeting, volume one is intended as a easy to read summary for the public, for staff, for people who might be looking at as a quick reference for things like, well, what is my property land use designation? Or what is the city's policy about extending water? Or what is the city's need for parks? Like where are we standing today versus how many acres of parks we might need? That volume one essentially contains a new vision statement that was created through a series of public engagement activities, including Facebook Live, as well as Zoom activities and surveys that were sent out. It includes 10 big ideas that the city's working toward. And it includes an update of goals and policies from the 2020 conference plan, which is the last time we updated it. So some had tweets in them, some had additions, and we worked through those. When we went through the individual chapters and volume one kind of puts it all into one document. Tonight, we are going through what's called volume two. Volume two is the detail version. And I, I was identifying this for the city council on Monday night. Think of volume two as you had to turn in your math paper. And if you just turn in all the answers, you're not going to pass the test. And similarly, the state requires when we do a comprehensive plan for growth management, we have to show our homework. And so a lot of the technical analysis that created our six-year transportation plan, our six-year utility plan and our land use map goes into volume two. So what we're going to do today is go through volume two and we're going to concentrate on areas that the planning commission might be interested in seeing that additional detail of the analysis. And one of the questions that came up, for example, the last meeting by Commissioner Campbell was about the water options we're looking at for supplying water. Now comprehensive plans are for 20-year future. In reality, we're going to be revisiting this in a couple of years anyway, so it's really short term, but it does help us set the stage for matching our land use demand, which is predominantly going to be residential to how we look at the provision of water, sewer, police, fire services and parks, et cetera, over the next couple of years. So I'm going to pause there with a summary of, of what we've done over the last several months. What was in volume one and the goal of reviewing volume two tonight? Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any other.
Okay, so the goal of tonight is to see if you're comfortable with the homework in volume two and to get a consensus from the planning commission that we would move forward with a workshop, a public workshop, an open house, it would be specifically what it would be for volume one and volume two. And we would do some press releases, we would do social media, we're going to do some individual mailings to properties that are specifically affected by the land use map. And I'm leading up to an invitation to the public to go to the open house and inviting people to look at these materials on the project website, which has been up this, this year and a half. And to be able to give feedback on the project website as well. So somebody wouldn't have to go to the open house to provide feedback, but they could, they could look at the plan and they'd be able to look at that at their own time, at their own convenience through that online version. So it'd be available for a longer period of time than just the one night open house. Okay? Right. So we're going to jump into the utilities chapter and go ahead and go down to the water section. So uh, just as a, as a primer, how many people in this room are familiar with where we get our water today? Okay, so I can't see Mark's hands, but I'm going to assume Brenda may not be as familiar with this. So in 2017. Oh, yours. Okay, perfect. Do you have a little hand on your control bar there? You put your hand up.
I think from last meeting, you mentioned we buy our water from Spokane.
We buy our water from the city of Spokane because the city of Airway Heights wells were found to be contaminated with two chemicals. One's called KFOA and one's called PFossa. And our levels are significantly higher than Washington state in the EPA acceptable levels. And so therefore we purchase our water. The plan has always been since 2017, by action of the city council, that we would be pursuing long-term, sustainable and affordable water source. So the water we get from Spokane is under a short-term contract. So we've been working through options to try and resolve this water issue. So the narrative in the homework section of the utility plan talks about what happened when it happened and what we're doing. So if you can just pan down a little bit more. It talks about how many gallons per minute we currently get from the city of Spokane through to, it's called EnerTies. They're basically connection to the Spokane water system to our system. And it talks about the wells that we had, they're still actually active. They haven't been closed. Where they are. So again, that homework, where are our wells? What do they do? What are they supplying? Keep going down. So it talks about our network of water, keep going down. And then it gets into the nuts and the bolts of how we show our work, our homework. So remember, we did a lot of work to pick up preferred map. And that was based on options. We worked through the planning commission, city council on where we want land uses to be, but it was predicated also on a professional market analysis by a company called Leland and Associates. They're a national firm. They looked at market conditions and, and how many square feet of commercial, industrial, and how many types of houses we would need. And this was also backed up by analysis by a framework or consultant on growth projections of population, how many housing units we would need. And so this is where the homework is saying, okay, from this point forward in 2023, if we look out 20 years, six years at a minimum under the act, the law says if look at a minimum six years and we look at 20 years, how much water are we going to need during this planning period? And then we start looking at how we're going to get it because under the state law, we are limited to growth, to our ability to serve. Does that make sense? Okay. So in the water demand, this could go back up a little bit. It talks about what our average daily demand is going to be, the maximum daily demand in what the peak hour system is going to require in gallons per minute. And ERU stands for equivalent residential unit. That is a technical term for water systems that in our code is divided, defined as 362 gallons per minute. Okay, so we paid for a professional analysis of demand on land use. Our consultant said, hey, here's some options for where this, where you could have this density and land use occur. We picked a preferred alternative. Our consultant sent tree set, Wes said, okay, well, based on these uses, this is how much water we think we're going to need. And we begin in the next page to look at some of the steps and options that we need in order to help us have a sustainable and affordable clean water source moving forward for the plan. And those options are that we would negotiate with the city of Spokane for additional water through the existing EnerTie. And that that would be a short-term and a potential long-term contract. So in the immediate future, we have an opportunity to contract another 250 gallons per minute by next year. And another thousand gallons per minute would be available after that from the city of Spokane to us specifically. 250 gallons per minute is a thousand equivalent residential units. So it's a lot of water. The other options we can look at is considering on two of the wells that we have that are currently contaminated. We would put in, it's called the granular activated carbon or GAC. Like careful. Filtration system. So what that would allow is the idea that we could get water from an existing water purveyor city Spokane on a short and a long-term agreement. We can also consider investing in GAC filtration onto our wells. Why is that important? We have water rights to those wells that are not being exercised because the wells are not being turned on because of the pollution that's coming out of that. The GAC filtration is an industry standard system. It's very expensive. But they can be added to a well and it would produce water that meets EPA and Department of Health standards for drinking water. And we will be able to supplement water that we purchased from Spokane with our own water if we invest in that GAC filtration. So each well, the costs of doing that, which would be, I think if there's a list when we, there will actually be a whole list of capital projects you'll see here in a minute, where we would put in the million dollars. I think it's a million dollars per well in order to put a GAC filtration. One of the reasons why the city has not done it thus, thus far is because it isn't just the initial investment, but the ongoing maintenance of those systems is very high. And so it's not been a preferred alternative up to this point for a primary water source to use GAC filtration as a long-term, affordable and then sustainable water source. Third option, which we've been pursuing for the last couple of years, has been to acquire a new water right in the Spokane Valley Raftern Aquifer, which is essentially the water system that's below the city of Spokane and extends all the way across the Idaho border under. System that's below the city of Spokane and extends all the way across the Idaho border under Post Falls, it's a massive aquifer system. It is a complicated process, we have already uh started. That application to the Department of Ecology to obtain new water rights in that aquifer. Part of the reason is because that aquifer is is very substantial. And that um over the long term, it would be a sustainable method of water. One of the downsides of wells up here on this aquifer, which is in the West Plains. Is concerns about how sustainable into the future that it is. So. We were pursuing that as an additional option for water, none of them are exclusive, we could do all three of them, we could do two. Um, we cannot necessarily do just one of these, but these are the the official options we're looking at that will allow us. To supply water and continue to um maintain the growth. That we forecast in this plan. So I'm gonna stop there and see if there are any questions.
I do, I'm just not sure if this is the place or the time. I I'm curious with with respect to the GAC system. The expense, is it is it kind of safe to assume that we maybe talk to big air force who's. Partially or largely responsible for this predicament, and they have said, we're not buying those for you or we're, I mean, that would seem like the logical thing would be the city would sue. The Fed to get the money to put in a thing to fix the thing that they broke, so.
So the Department of Defense uh hired a consultant who did an analysis. Uh of options for supplying airway heads with dollar. Doing the GAC filtration was the preferred alternative. Um by the Department of Defense, the city council. Decided that was not the city's preferred alternative, because I think there were some limitations on what the Department of Defense was offering with that filtration system and I. And I could be wrong on this, but my recollection was that they were going to limit how long that they would pay for them, the maintenance of the system. And you know, Airway Heights has been here since nineteen fifty five. The city Spokane has been there since eighteen ninety eight officially before that, you know, I've been there for significant number of years. Cities are going to be around for hundreds of years, so when we talk about sustainable. And affordable, that's a consideration is. You know, will the water be there? Will it be able to be used and how much does it cost to our community or citizens? To be able to pay for that water, because you get a water bill every month, right? So that's, that's been one of the hitching posts um with this conversation about about the GAC filtration. Um, the city also is participating in a lawsuit against the Department of Defense. Because of the contamination of the wells and because of the limitations of what are being offered for. Water in the long term. And it is a class action lawsuit because there are communities all over the United States that are affected by military installations, contamination of their water supply. So Issaquah is another example where their water supply was contaminated. Um, they did choose to use the GAC filtration system. City Spokane or city of uh Deer Park. Yesterday. Was announced in the newspaper that they have now found PFossa in three of their wells. So um. It's unlikely, of course, a military installation, they have an airport out there, I don't know if that was the identified um source of the people at PFossa. But in general, um there are contaminant sources out there greater than just military installations, but. But our focus has been around military because that's. That's the likely source of our of our um contamination, so that answers your question?
Yes, um, uh yeah, I was actually surprised to hear that they did offer something. I I in you know, obviously, we're not here to second guess the city um leadership, I I do kind of feel like. If we if we discard adoption. Now, because of what we think how it's going to be in in years in the future, we also are discarding. The possibility and maybe likelihood that there will be new technology that would be more affordable and and all those things, so anyway, but that's, they they made that call. Um, and and as an aside, I found this great, this this thing hit every checkbox with me, I've read it every page, I read every single page.
That's awesome.
Um, and I. Frankly, kudos to the folks at Public Works or whoever else was involved in building like the wastewater treatment stuff, when I read all the the projections and the. The data for that, I thought. Yeah, nice move, I mean, we've, they've built. A cushion that will carry us seemingly for several years, you know, potentially many years. So no, I love, this was great, I I I had some question about some of the data and what they're particularly economic development data. Um, about how fresh it was, but I don't want to detract from what you're talking about here, so no, I I love it, I just. It went right to my little green brain, it said, oh yeah, you love all this data stuff.
That's awesome, that's great to hear, I mean. But I think that's that's the part here is that most people aren't looking for the deep dive, um they just want to see the list, like, are you going to extend water to me or not?
Right.
Um, if you're developer or you're, you know, looking at at doing a project, but I mean, we do have to do the research, so. With that, we'll just um scroll a little bit further into the water section and you'll get a flavor for essentially the same thing you're going to see. Repeated in the um. Not with the water, but you'll see it in the sewer section, the reclaimed water. Information and um there'll be a a much more summarized version for with regards to capital facility, so. If anybody has anything that they want to just pause on, but here's that um six year and twenty year we're required to do. Um, how we did the market analysis, if you keep going down. I'm going to point this out, um. Uh, go up just one back to the upper table, right above it, there's a little comment there under. Uh, number three, so. We have two tribal trust lands within our appropriate limits, we don't plan for them and they don't plan for us. Because that property is sovereign nation, it is not subject to local airway heights regulations nor state regulations. But we are purveyor utilities to them. And so uh they have documents identifying what their development plans are, and so they were reviewed. In conjunction with our utility planning, because they're a customer. For water and sewer, um just as any housing development or any commercial facility is, so. Um, we did review their plans, we did consult with them about their plans. Um, I would say the feedback they gave is that they wanted us to consider a greater amount of development for themselves for purposes of water and sewer demand. But we relied on um kind of ascertain whether we were meeting their expectations and if, you know. Over the six and the twenty year period, they were very close um from what the um Leland market analysis did, so. Um, I just want to point that out because. It was a um specific um. Need to to look internally at that issue. Um, when we look at the study, okay, you keep going through the utility chapter, um. And so uh there's maps in here showing our service area. And then it just gets into the same type of detail for sewer, um how we look at sewer domain.
Back up one second, I noticed when I went through this. I don't think there's a figure nine two, and I know that's like totally nitpooed, there's a reference to. Um, that. Go a little farther. So sewer service here, figure nine two illustrates current, I don't think there is a figure two, nine two.
Okay.
It's like blank. I think I think it looked like there was supposed to be one there. And we got to write the nine three.
So it should be number nine three because it's the sewer service area.
Oh, so it's a.
It's a typo.
Okay.
No, you're you went up too far, he's just talking about the text right there.
Sorry, I was just looking at the what we labeled that first one, which.
Yeah, it should be, now if if they skip numbering and there is no ninety two, then they'll have to correct the numbering on the figures. That's a good point, okay. Uh. We have a water reclaim system here.
So I have a quick question about that. Is it, is it a single facility that does two things, water reclamation? And sewer treatment, are those are those two processes within the same physical plant or are there two plants?
Um, you should go on a tour, that's really cool. Yeah, it's super cool, you wouldn't believe that a city as small as this has such a such a cool modern facility, but basically. It does both. So sewer comes in there. And we treat it in order to make it into uh reclaimed water, which goes into the system, but there are points. Where um because of. Maintenance on the facility that uh it all goes to just treatment as sewage. And it doesn't become um reclaimed water in the purple pipe. So most of the time it does become reclaimed water because we have. End users that use it, but there are times when it does become just treated sewage. But it's a tied in system because sometimes they have to shut down one part and it goes over. Strict and gets served strictly in one area. Um, and other times it's flowing through all of these systems, so think of a. It's a, it's a main building with exterior tanks, but what it's doing is, you know, its sewage comes in. And it goes through a series of treatments. And it uses uh organisms in order to break down and consume the solids and things like that, so there's always. The need to pull the solids off of the effluent, I'm trying to use the nicest words possible, that come into that system. And then it pipes over into an underground system that then goes through further treatment, which ultimately goes through. A series of tanks that uses ultraviolet um to treat the water and then it goes out of that plant. In purple pipe and the primary user of our purple pipe is actually the prison. Uh, two years ago, the prison converted all of their non potable systems to purple pipe. So that their laundry and you know, all of that is consuming. That, and so uh my understanding is. That there's so much demand with that user that there are times where we're not putting enough sewage into the system to get treated in order to supply that. Now, as the city grows, we'll be having more effluent created, and so we just got a Department of Ecology grant. And alone, and we're going to be extending the purple pipe. Further over to the west, down Sixth Avenue. And um it will be used for irrigation on the Sixth Avenue project that we're designing. And I believe that um. There is some discussion that the Spokane tribe is interested in tapping into that for irrigation purposes. And we would love to see the Kalispel facilities because they have a laundry facility there.
Well, I was I was also really surprised because having having previously lived on rural property with a well and a septic and stuff, I didn't know you could do ground injection. Wells, I thought those were no notes, but if I read correctly, we're actually piping some of that reclaimed water into the aquifer up here.
Yes.
And then we're able to withdraw that water back out without. Necessarily needing any additional permits and and it's not a violation, it's not a water rights issue because it's the water we put in, we can take that much water out.
Right.
And then um. And I saw there was also a comment about expanding the, as you said, expanding the use of the reclaimed water purple pipe. To reduce, so we're not using drinking water. That we're having to look for.
Exactly.
And and I know, I thought this plan was really well written and really well thought out, um.
That's our consultant, Sir Tree West, he does he does all of that work. Um, and does all of the um facility planning for the reclamation and the wastewater, so you you hit on all the highlights, and so this, again, this is the homework section. So it, you know, most people aren't aware of that, but it's an incredibly, we're an incredibly sophisticated um city for our size with what we're able to do. Okay, uh, so just. At this point. Those are the essential elements of really the utility chapter. The capital facility chapter, we're required to go over um things like what we're going to be doing with. Any any kind of capital investment by the city, so no mystery that most of that section just says. We have all these departments, so the police department's located over there. Uh, fire department's located over there, building and planning is located over here, city hall is located here. Our um our investment plan for the six year period is that we're. Selling all of these properties, we're purchasing the property over at Gerfield. And that we will be spending twenty million dollars over a period of years and we will be um consolidating all of these. City uh services into combined facility of one of Gerfield, so that's basically our capital plan. For Airway Heights, um. I mean, there there's not a lot there, we kind of do an overview that we have. You know, uh utility companies that serve and you know what, who those are, so it's not a great deal of information about the capital facilities in general, but that's. That's what we're doing. Uh, were there other chapters that the group wanted to do homework review on, did you want to look at the land use? Or did you want to look at the housing chapter, or did you want to look at? The economic development chapter, we can do whatever you'd like to do, uh because we want to make sure that everybody had a chance to have any questions answered about volume two.
Well, I personally, I think I was mostly. Um, interested in the economic development chapter. Um, because that is kind of. That's kind that, I think that is a kind of a voodoo art of trying to figure out what economies you're going to do and what, you know, it's it's all these projections. And again, what I noticed mostly was it seemed like the the population that, well, it's right up there, two thousand thirteen to seventeen, that's six years old. Um, and I'm wondering is is should that be refreshed, could it be refreshed? Um, and would that all potentially alter? Those projections.
There may be updated ACS numbers, we could get.
Yeah, ACS, yeah.
I also thought it was interesting that the best economic opportunity was in gas stations without convenience stores. Number two, though, is full service restaurants.
There's employment. Just generally describing the breakdown of what types of areas people work in, can you keep her in?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I would agree with that because after COVID, I would say um there's probably been some significant shifts. You know, in the service industry.
To be fair, though, like, there's been a massive shift in airways since like early twenty teens period. Like, there's been a lot more added in since then. Uh, a lot more service stuff. But down there on McFarlane, you just had a lot more come in during that time period as well. Um. So I'm sure this this data can't be accurate.
That it cannot be accurate?
Yeah, if it's twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen, there's no way that that can be accurate to what's going on in those situations now. Just the amount of growth that's been down there in that industrial areas, I mean, it takes a lot of people to fill those. Um, and just thinking of how many people have shifted and then to add in the COVID, like you're saying, it just completely shifted. How the city was working.
Thank you, good night. So we'll talk to uh Framework about uh updating these tables with ACS, which is the source of this data that's on here now, so American Community Survey. The sample data um that's produced between census. Um, and there, obviously, we have the twenty twenty census, and so there's some data there. Um, Zach and I were talking about this, I think, Monday, which is, there's concerns about the accuracy of the twenty twenty census. Because it was done during COVID.
Hmm.
Pardon?
Uh, nothing, Heather, on my end.
Okay, uh, so we'll ask them about this chapter and updating the data, um anything else in the economic development chapter?
No, I just thought it was really interesting to just kind of see where Airway Heights. Fits into the state and compared to Spokane and.
Um, our median income uh should actually be significantly lower than that. Um, today.
Actually, was pulling updated numbers on all that from the most recent ACS, so trying to find it.
If you can just keep scrolling down, okay, so we'll ask about updating um the data. Or the section, because I think all of it is is from that five year period.
There was one that caught my eye. There was one that caught my eye. It was, I think, it was, I think, employment types.
I think that's further if we go up in the scrolling, yeah.
And 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 the only reason it caught my attention is because I I obviously Spokane, the city of Spokane in particular has a huge health and medical industry, right? Huge. And I saw some references, looked like we had people in in that industry in Airway, and I thought, well, we did recently add maybe a couple of
It's not the businesses here, it's the the people who live here.
Oh, who live here? Okay, okay.
These are the occupations of the of the people that live in this community.
Ah, okay, I should have thought of that.
Anything else on economic development? Okay, um let's just go poke at the other chapters since we have a few minutes. Unless everybody feels comfortable with the other chapters. I don't want to, I don't want to eliminate an opportunity for a closer look.
Heather, I would appreciate it if you showed us what you thought was most pertinent. I feel like I'm re revisiting information that's been presented before.
Okay, uh let's just go to the beginning then. So I think Landis is the first one. Actually, it looks like
Economic Development was first, and then just the way these were presented.
Okay, um so just go ahead and go to Landis. Uh keep going down. Um this is probably the one that that Zach and I kind of go around and around on, and and I think it's it's the idea that um people aren't quite fully aware how impacted Airway Heights is by um the sound contours, the overlays for Fairchild, the accident potential zone for Fairchild, as well as the amount of um public lands. We have a prison in the middle of the city. And uh also the not just the tribal trust land, but then the land that the Kalispell um tribe also owns. And so um this map kind of really um brings forward uh some of these issues, because then we start to realize, okay, well, we don't have the ability to really look at very much of the north uh essentially east portion of the city, because it's essentially in tribal ownership or in trust land. Uh the everything south of the squiggly lines is essentially a no go for residential development. We're really looking at a little donut there in the northwest portion. So I think this is a good example of kind of outlining the things that we have to work with. And Zach and I talk about, there is almost no place that we can think of where you can work and have so many challenges in such a small geographic area uh as a community. I've keep going down. Uh keep going, keep going, keep going. Going. Here's the rest. So here is the population forecast. And then below that is, I think it should be the updated um numbers to go down a little bit more. Yep, there it is. So this is just a reminder that when we began the process that we had an allegation from the county, twenty seventeen was our official year of the last update that we were supposed to do. So we were three years behind on doing our comp plan, so but officially it was twenty seventeen. We were exceeding the growth numbers um that were included in our allocation of population. And the planning commission selected that we would go after a more aggressive population number because of the rate of growth. And so we're documenting that because all of our analysis is based on this idea that we're growing faster. So I think at one point, we were supposed to be about a three percent per year, and we were seeing somewhere in the realm of plus to ninety percent year population increase. So that's important here because it's it's how we're separating ourselves from our last state required plan, saying we're growing faster. And we're now going to be adjusting our assumptions as we move forward. So this is important for the growth trend. Keep going down. Um going down. So this was early on in the process, and I wanted to just kind of um identify the pink line and the yellow line on the far right hand side, the R one represents our single family zoning. And so between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty, when we did the last land, we had consumed um forty percent of our residential land. So it was just to kind of show we have been consuming um that residential land far greater than we expected. And when we looked at the available land at the beginning of this process, we found that we had very, very little residential land actually still available in the city. And I think Don can speak to that as as local real estate representative. Keep going down.
I have a question about the urban growth here. Is is there some constraint that keeps us stopped at McFarland?
Yeah, we're bordered up against the corporate limits of the city of Spokane.
What?
City of Spokane.
Really, they've they've flanked us?
Yeah.
Really? That explains, I mean, because I thought you've got all that they've put in a multimodal or whatever they call that real yard. It hasn't seen a car yet, but oh my.
I am. It's a fun tool.
Put it up on the screen. That was one of the great things that Zach added is you can't steal the corporate limits on the J S.
You know, militarily, that's just a terrible idea. I would attack him at that choke point.
I don't know if that was the idea behind it, but
We've you've never been able to see that like in a color.
Yeah, no, that's that's amazing.
Now you I mean, just the things that Zach and I look at all the time, but now with now with um J S, we can actually see how that's impacting us. So yes, we got flanked.
And there's a very long, fun story about.
So just out of curiosity, is that something that's ever could potentially be renegotiated? This was if they want to give it up.
This was negotiation.
Not that part.
No, but the other
No, the reason that it would not likely be is because um Spokane created a public development authority, which is an economic development entity created around the airport. And and part of that property uh includes um airport, city and county land as part of that economic development entity. So no, they're not gonna, my opinion, hell would freeze over before we'd ever see every them backing out the property that's in that. Okay, we can go back to the comp plan. Good question, though. Uh so here's where we get down to how land use is impacting our available land use needs. So just remember, we have growth projections, it gets translated into housing demands. We look at the available um number of acres. We look at what are densities we adopted in the plan, and it it pumps out a formula saying this is how many housing units and this is how many acres that you would need to have. Remember, we're showing our homework. So this section corresponds to the housing chapter, um which says how many total housing units that we needed. And when we looked at the the land use map, we did not have enough residential land in order to produce the number of housing units to serve the population that we forecast based on that higher number of expected um number of people that would live here. So it's it's all tied together is basically how this works. So um if you can, I think they have the preferred land use map um in this chapter too, if you can find that. Should be here. It's definitely in volume one, but I thought it was here. And there we are. So then that's how we got to the options last year that the planning commission looked at of how do we increase density in some areas of the city? Was that enough to get us to the number of housing units we needed? Uh and the answer was no. And the reason was because at the time, we were looking for converting land uh from other non residential uses to residential. So on the screen there in Zach Williams' mouse, the yellow area uh that's on the right hand side on the top next to the Kalispell, that's proposed to go from industrial to residential. So remember from from last meeting, that's about fifty acres. Uh everything else up there is already developed with a non residential use, but it's outside of the overlay zones for Fairchild. We also looked at areas next to the downtown um that's just below Sunset Elementary that would go to high density residential. Right now, it's low density residential because our downtown plan says if you want to have a good vibrant downtown, you need to have more people living next to it. So that was only about eleven acres. And then when we look at the um the medium orange colors that were adjacent to Craig Road, uh there was actually about another seventy five acres in that area that we could go to meeting density residential. And we're about to lose the opportunity for that because that's one of the um applications coming forward as to proposing to decent family there. So we we weren't getting there in the math, and so we looked at doing an urban growth area, which is an area that we would in the twenty year period potentially would annex into identified it as residential. And that's where you have the almost rectangle on the left hand side of the map, north of the green. The green is the Spokane tribe. So we had um one existing urban growth area to the north of the city limits. The other one, we already had that one, but we still needed more according to the calculations that we got from the consultant. So does that make sense how we kind of like, okay, well, we had to make a greater assumption of number of people. That meant we needed more houses. We had a greater amount of consumption of our residential lands over the short period. So then we looked at where could we find new lands in the city? We still didn't have enough. So now we're looking at outside the city, designating some urban growth areas that we might grow into over a twenty year period that we would need for residential purposes. And that is the magic of the appendix section, which is basically volume two.
So is is the relationship between housing and population, it seems like there's a little bit of the chicken and the egg going on there. I mean, people can't come to a city if there's no place for them to live.
Which is why this map is proposed to create residentialism land. So in order to, so the belief is the population will come in order to accommodate it, you have to create the opportunity for that to exist. And we don't have enough residential land to accommodate that population. So that becomes a directive to every city and county under growth management to change your land use to accommodate it. In our case, we're looking at in this cycle of adding more residential land. When we come to the next cycle, by the end of twenty twenty six, we will taking the existing land and we will be substantially increasing the number of units that could be built on our existing city. That requirement did not exist for April of twenty twenty three. We've been at this for a year and a half, so. Uh that will be the next iteration is we will get a new population allocation during our discussions with the county. We 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 got a countywide population allocation. We now have a housing allocation, and it will require us to dig in deeper on how we're going to allow at least two units on every lot that currently has a single family. And that's why we're looking at that grant to help us do that over the next year.
Of course, that then also lets up against water availability and all those other factors.
We have some area water availability, sewer capacity and transportation facilities with growth. They have to keep pace with each other. And so there we have built in regulations that mirror that out. So we have transportation impact fees that go toward building the roadway infrastructure. We have water concurrency that limits the amount of water we give out to the amount of water we actually have. And so we're keeping housing growth, commercial growth, industrial growth and pace with those facilities, which is exactly what the the state law requires. Um let's go out of this and let's touch on the housing chapter real quick. I know you're still looking for the ACS data.
I was actually, uh and it's we need to talk to him. Where you want to go, I'm sorry.
I want to go to housing. Uh so this is a really a lot of the same data that has in the land's chapter, if you keep just going down. Uh this is historical number of homes that have been built um on a really basic type system. Um this was up to the last periodic update um of how many housing units we had grown in our community. Where does this come from? The housing data comes from census.
It's the same data set.
I was going to go on the next five point four, your next one. They're wrong. At the very bottom, pre nineteen thirty nine, it says zero. No, I uh
It's the
Next one. I noticed that today when I went back through it, it's like that should be one.
Until thirty nine, there was one house.
Uh huh, right across the street. I've got one that was built in nineteen thirty. I think it's the oldest house in town. So the census is wrong on that first.
Well, was it permitted?
Uh the assessor's office tracks history of properties, but I don't know if there's a, anyway. Um I guess really the same comment would be here, maybe in the housing is is does this need to be updated with ACS data? At least for if there's any anything we need there of beyond twenty seventeen. Uh see, I would say at the very least, we probably need to look at um the census for things like tenure or housing. Um again, this is this is up to the twenty seventeen periodic update that was there. And this is uh talking about very low income, moderate income market rate. Keep going. Like, most of this was drawn was drawn directly out of the twenty twenty comp plan and pulled forward into this plan. Um let's see, so we did yeah, use housing. Uh once you go to transportation, um this just is a more detailed explanation of the classifications of the roads. The maps are actually in volume one, but this is just the definition of the federal classification. Keep going.
The formatting is different. I gotta talk to them about them.
Yeah, um just what type of streets, um the urban classification map. So we are proposing to change the classifications of some roads based on how they'll be used in the future. And those are predominantly extension of collector designation. So collectors aren't intended to take local access, which is, you know, commercial and industrial and residential streets where everybody has a driveway and put it onto a collector system. So uh Hayford Road north of US two is a collector. That's an example. It's, you know, funneling all this traffic, arterial, the only arterial we have is going uh through as US two. And there's these definitions that we have to meet in order to ask for a classification under the federal highway system. Keep going.
When did they start work on this? Was it prior to December eighth, twenty twenty two? I think it was. So that's why, because the ACS twenty seventeen to twenty twenty one didn't come out till then. So that's why they're using the older set, because it wasn't available when they
Wasn't available until twenty twenty two, and they'd already developed the drafts. Um we've talked about level of service. Um every agency has to do a level of service. Um, we've talked about level of service. Um, every agency has to do a level of service, which is the amount of delay time at intersections. And we've produced some maps that help in a kind of red-green light. Methodology to help to understand where we have problems, where we don't have problems. Uh, where we're gonna have, we're starting to have problems and we need to think about that. This translates directly into roadway projects that go into the six-year and twenty-year capital plan. Which is now in here. Uh, can you go to those? This is just, this is just all kinds of background data. Keep going, keep going. Um, we also have, as we're getting there, here's that red, green. Yellow, um, system I just mentioned about intersections and what's going on there. So it's a. Overview where we're having basically failures in intersections, US two and. Hayford Road is a failing intersection. There's nothing more we can do to fix it. Um, so we've developed some alternative routes in order to help, uh, pull traffic off. And that's all this chapter does is talk in. Extreme detail about, um, what's going on with level service. Um, and how we're gonna be dealing that with roadway. Improvements as we move forward. Anything here that anybody was interested in knowing more about?
The list of improvements, I think that was that were the list of projects?
Yep.
Where did those, I know some of those are very actively being pursued right now, real time. I was, I was kinda curious where, did those come out of your office or do those come out of? Somebody else's office. I just, where the, the list, like with the, the ones that caught my attention was some surprising ones like. Extending twenty-first down to Deer Heights Road, you know, that kind of stuff. Where, where did that come from? Just out of curiosity.
So taking twenty-first, that's a really good example. So our, first of all, our, our traffic consulting firm is our Dura. They used to be known as TO Engineering. Our traffic engineers for years. And what they do is they, us, help us assess the impacts of development. Um, apply the level of service and help us understand how traffic over time is gonna be impacting those intersections. Quite a few years ago, um. The Washington State Department of Transportation came back and said. We already foresee that we are not going to be able to modify US two. To accommodate the amount of traffic going through this area. And so there were early coordinated efforts in transportation planning with Washington State Department of Transportation. Looking at alternatives because we can't. We, that's, would be too expensive because everybody's built up to the roadway line. And there were some ideas that started to be circulated amongst the transportation engineers at Wash Dot and our Dura. City of Airway Heights in Spokane County and the city of Spokane about developing some other options. And what gelled out of that was an inter-agency plan. To do, uh, parallel route development. So they're. They're. Developing with us a corridor on the south side of US two, starting at Deer Heights. Going through the city of Spokane and following a, an existing right-of-way. Which is called Eighteenth on the city Spokane side. And when you cross into Airway Heights becomes twenty-first. That right-of-way extends all the way to Craig Road and then the county adopted. A long-term plan that eventually that road would cross Craig. Go further in the county to the west and eventually come back and, and touch twenty-first avenue. So we began. Well over ten years ago, adopting long-range comprehensive plan saying. We think this is going to be, uh, an alternative way to pull traffic on the south, off the, off of US two. And develop a, a bypass on the south side. And we did the same thing on the north side and that's called Sixth Tenth, Twelfth. And again, the name changes because it's changing jurisdictional boundaries as it goes east to west. So Spokane, their vision is eventually to pull traffic off of Sunset Boulevard. Pull it. Over to, um, Flank Road and then from there it will cross over. Um, to Deer Heights behind the North Forty. It goes through the air, city of Airway Heights where we have the existing street and it will connect over to Craig Road. And then eventually it'll go through the Spokane Tribe and then it will, um, hopefully return back to US two. And that will be the north bypass route. So over time, transportation engineers collectively identify. That long-term development is going to be impacting facilities and begin to do long-range. Plans about how to develop financially and construction-wise alternative routes. That exact same thing is happening right now. Because the Spokane International Airport is proposing a third runway. And Hayford Road will eventually not go through to I ninety anymore. So part of the planning efforts we're doing with the airports, Spokane County, city of Spokane, us. And Washington State Department of Transportation is likely to develop Craig Road. As the primary south access point. Down to. Yeah, down to I ninety. So these things take decades to accomplish. So just this year, for example, Spokane County. Uh, advocated for some legislative appropriations to start improving the interchange where Craig Road. Would touch I ninety and start developing Craig Road. Now today, it's to help create a, a functional back access. To Fairchild, which serves a dual purpose of getting traffic off of US two by allowing. Airmen and civilians to go through Craig Road. But long-term. Once the, uh, airport develops the third runway, Hayford Road won't, won't exist anymore. So it will become the alternative route for getting to I ninety. So that's why we work regionally with our partners to identify viable roadway. Projects and start putting them in long-term plans like that twenty-year list of projects that you saw. Which includes for us on US two, having a south. Predominantly freight route, pulling traffic off of US two to get around. Uh, and it will also serve those industrial areas that are generating freight like Amazon. Exotic metals, uh, et cetera, that are in that area.
Jack, what's the blue line? Is that the sound contour?
Uh, so that is the airport overlay zone. So that's the only portion of this that crosses into Airway Heights. It's essentially like. It's similar to a sound contour, but it's for SIA Spokane International Airport and so Fairchild. So it limits density and several uses. It really isn't too impactful, um, with.
What are you thinking? It already overlays the whole one's a residential, doesn't it?
Uh, it does, but it's grandfather.
Yeah, so. Sakani is, is. Sakani would not be made today.
Well, I see that whole big apartment complex that are off Deer Heights on the south side.
And that was a huge deal when that went in. There was, um, conversations and lawsuits and all sorts of stuff. So, um, there actually was a second phase of that development that did not go through because of that. So. Oh, but yeah, um, so when we do do reviews for proposals, so when someone wants to come in and ask if they can, you know, we, we wanna do this. This is something we do look at to see if there is any restrictions from Spokane International Airport, cause we do have an agreement with them within our code, so.
You know, and then all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Scared the heck out of them.
So, um, with that, we're kinda, I think, unless there are any specific questions, that's kind of a general overview of, of volume two. And the notes that I have here or to look at the, if possible, to update the ACS data in the economic development housing chapter. But, um, Zachary's indicating that that data was what was available between the document was drafted because. American Community Survey was doing these five-year increments. Um, for the blocks of the data.
Yeah, they dropped it about eight months ago. So this was developed prior to that. Um, since does that, they'll drop stuff and not tell anyone. I just found out the twenty twenty stuff was available, I think, last week. I was really excited. But it had been out for like three.
So, um, with that, that would conclude our, our overview of volume two. So, uh, what is the feeling of the plan commission about moving forward to the house? With the drafts?
I mean, as long as we can get some of that, that data updated if possible, I definitely felt comfortable with sending it on.
I don't know if we can, we can get the, um, data updated at, at this point, but I will inquire about it.
Yeah, the, the, the major concern is that a lot of. Narrative is built around foundationally that data. So it would, wouldn't be just like a swap of a number. It would be a rewrite of the plan. Um, but I don't know that for sure. We would have to do more research, so. But we'll ask.
Yeah, well, I think, yeah, I think it's a question of degree, how, how significant it's to change in the data.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's. Not significant, then the narrative probably doesn't have to change very much. I guess on the flip side is if it is significant, would we want to change the narrative?
Sure. No, it, it opens Pandora's box of questions for sure.
It's one of those things that we always experience with a comp plan, um. Is that since it takes a period of time, typically it takes two years to a comprehensive plan. There's a point where you just have to cut off. And so when we look at the Leland Market study. Um, the data that they were collecting was through, it was basically early twenty twenty-two, kind of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So, um, actually I think they, they did it twenty twenty-one. So, um. They, we haven't had them go back and do an updated market analysis because it's taken us, um, a year and a half to adopt the plan. But it doesn't mean that it's invalid because they did it as a twenty-year forecast, which is to your point of, you know, is it significant or not?
Like, and also we're gonna be revisiting this right after, basically, am I correct, Heather?
Yep. We're, so we do this and it will be updated for the. Twenty twenty-six deadline.
I mean, I think that, that, that kind of weighs into it as well. So, I mean, as long as it's not. Causing us any concern going forward, then I think it is, the, the document itself is, I think, ready to go on. Um, it's been worked on for so long now.
I, I would agree with that. And, and again, I, I found this, I found volume two to be wonderfully instructive. I mean, I just. Found all kinds of things that really helped me understand Airway Heights much, much better. Yeah, I think, I think the city's on a great path here. To shape its future.
Dustin, do you have any questions? This was, this was kinda like putting the garden hose up to your mouth today.
No, uh, luckily being in business and everything, I've looked at things like this before. So this makes a lot of sense to me. Uh, I'm right there with Mark, honestly, uh. You know, having the projections for twenty seventeen kinda concerns me a little bit. If the newer ones from twenty twenty are significantly different. I'd be curious to see how that's actually affecting it, but I completely understand what Zach's saying too. And that's opening Pandora's box and starting a lot of work over from the beginning. That doesn't sound like fun. So, but no, I understand where we're going, what we're looking at here.
Good. Brenda, did you have any questions? This is a very new experience, uh, doing a comprehensive plan work. I think for most everybody. I think Mark, Mark's our only veteran.
Uh, no, I was able to understand most of it and, um, you go very much into depth, which I appreciate. Um, I also understand if we do update numbers, uh, that it would take a lot longer to, we'll build another plan. So I would say, uh, make the edit for the, uh, the figure nine, three year. Um, and other than that, I would say this is good.
So overall, do you feel like, um. Presenting this to the public that it's, it's being presented in a way in which people can. Can surf it, you know, they can look at as little or as much as they want to, the document.
For those that choose to dive into it, it's great information. For those that go, well, yeah, just nod their head and.
Yeah, my, my only other comment about that structurally.
I was just gonna say, I think that most of the people are just gonna nod their head like Don said, but, uh, I think it is definitely straightforward enough. It's a plain speak throughout the whole entire thing that they really wanna try to understand what they're looking at. It's gonna make sense to them.
Yeah, my, my only comment would be editorially. And I think I felt the same way about volume one, is it, you know, acronyms and, and stuff. If they're, if they're either a glossary or something at the end or, or, and I know it's a lot of editing work to always make sure that anytime. An acronym is introduced the first time, it's always spelled out what it means. And I noticed. In, in this, both of these documents, sometimes the acronym will show up and then a page later, a definition of it will show up. So, but I just, that just comes from me spending too many years looking at Air Force regulations and going, what the hell does that mean? I don't.
I agree with that. There were some that I didn't quite understand, but I'm hoping most people are in this current century where we can Google it. So that's the hope.
That's a good point.
I think the reality is, is like Don says distinctly, the people that are gonna read it are gonna know what they're reading. The other people are just gonna nod and go along with it. So the people that will read this will get the information out of it that's in it.
Uh, that's a good, uh, that's a good point. So the ones that are gonna be reading this, uh, that are gonna give us the strongest critiques. Are gonna be agencies. Um. Every, you know, everything from the agencies we normally talk to, like Department of Health, Department of Ecology. Our neighboring agencies are gonna take a look at it, like, you know, look at this, particularly volume two, you know, to see what we put in there. Um. So I mean, there, there is gonna be a real review of this to some extent, but. In some ways not, because everybody understands this is not a GMA required plan. This is for us, so we can understand what we need to do over the next couple of years. And one of the things that I've kind of struggled to, um, think about is, you know, why are we doing a plan? Cause you have another plan coming up and. And I think Zach and I will be doing like five plans in five years or something stupid like that, but. Is that sometimes the things we need to do, we have to go through this policy step. And so that if we walked away from, from. With a simple understanding, which is it's going to allow us again. To understand where we're going for the next couple of years for development of facilities, bringing water sewer, water system, water source. What we're gonna do with the sewer, uh, and it's gonna set the stage for a little, a little bit more residential land. Um, so that we can feed. Um, the demand for housing over the next couple of years until we do the next plan. I mean, walking away. That's what it's helping us do. And, you know, for. For those of us trying to help get stuff built, it's gonna help us with grant applications. So it's, I think it's achieving the goals. And especially since it helped us understand a lot better where we were gonna have to be in the next couple of years around the water system. And where we're gonna need to be for. For services.
Well, Heather, I definitely was. Uh, I definitely respect yours and Zach's work. Especially when you present this information to us, explain how it relates to everything. Um, I trust what you guys are telling us just based on experience with you all. So I trust that if you think this is appropriate to go forward to these different agencies and it'll help our city, then. The information in it is stuff that we talked about. And almost all our other, um, duties in this commission and. I would like to see our cities just keep moving forward. So get this out there so you guys can start trying to get more grants or do whatever you need to do on your end.
Okay, great. Well, um, with that, then, then we'll move forward. We are gonna ask the question about the ACS data, um. So next steps are, um, we're going to work with the consultants to pin down an actual date for the open house. Um, we'll communicate that with you, with you an email. Um, but in the interim, what, uh, we would be likely doing is bringing these documents. Um, also for public hearing by the plan commission at your October eleventh, uh, normally scheduled meeting. So, um, in, in preparation for that, we're gonna do some social media. We're gonna do some individual mailings. Which we did do before to the individual property owners that are proposed to. Which we did do before to the individual property owners that are proposed to have the change of their land use category. Cause that, I think that's an appropriate step to let them know. Um, when we gave them, uh, mailed notice before, we heard from them, they called us, they attended the planning commission meetings. Um, so that hearing, um, on October 11th, we'll do legal notice. Uh, we may see if we'd be able to go upstairs for that meeting. Um, I'm not is that, um, that will kind of figure out where we're going to be exactly. Um, public testimony, um, people could be coming testifying. Um, we could get letters, uh, in advance of this as well, letting us, uh, with a little comment about the draft. Uh, the goal is to basically take any letters or comments that we get and then the planning commission will consider those and the planning commission is the option of recommending forwarding the plan to city council for adoption. Uh, it could be recommending, uh, forwarding with changes to the plan or the planning commission can recommend it not move forward to the city council at that point. So that's, that's the outcome of of a, of a draft like this in a public hearing setting. So any questions about a public hearing on the draft plan?
No, I don't have a.
Okay. Sorry, Mark.
I was just saying, no, I don't have any, but, um, I'd also say like to the fellow commissioners, if you do have something that concerns you, reach out to Heather and Zach and talk to them outside of this and see if they can provide you more information. Cause I know of the past, I've talked to both of them and got more information on any given thing. And then it, it just makes you more informed.
Okay. Um, so hearing, open house, public engagement moves on to city council. We'll be taking care of a couple of technical things like the, um, the CIPA um, review on the project. And, um, that would conclude our next steps on this piece. Um, we do have, uh, some updates on another project. Uh, if you're willing to give us just a couple of minutes before we uh, end our time today to talk about the sunrise at Hunter's Crossing preliminary flat.
Uh, I'm absolutely open to hearing more.
Okay. So as you may recall, that, uh, project owner had requested a delay over several months of the hearing. Uh, they are now comfortable with moving forward with the hearing. Uh, we have advised them that we are not certain that we, uh, that would be appropriate to try and put a public hearing on a plat and the conference of plan hearing on the same evening. Um, so just your thoughts on that, if you wanted to just work it out, um, and have a comp plan and a preliminary plat hearing on the same night. Uh, the options would be.
We've been offered that. I didn't think we offered that.
We, I had told the applicant, I didn't think that that was an option because it's a lot to do a comprehensive plan hearing. But I just wanted to kind of put that out for you to consider. Um, the other option would be to have the preliminary plat public hearing on your next regularly scheduled meeting date in November. Uh, that would be the only thing that would be on the agenda at this point, uh, other than we would, um, start to talk about the work program for next year. Uh, the other option would be to have a special meeting. Um, however, we have tasked the planning commission, the, um, second meetings all summer. So I didn't know if the planning commission was were out on additional meetings, um, and you prefer to go back to your regular schedule of monthly, once a month meetings. So I just wanted to kind of lay that all out there. Um, it does create additional, uh, requirements for uh, the staff to turn around materials. If you do do meetings twice a month, um, with additional deadlines. So it does, it does increase the amount of work to do second meetings, but, um, with the goal of trying to get the comp plan done, we've been trying to manage that, um, so that we can meet some deadlines. So what are your thoughts about a hearing date for the sunrise at Hunter's Crossing preliminary flat?
Do we have any, um, workshops going on next month?
Uh, no, I, I just identified, we might talk about a work program, but other than that, we haven't got any things definitively scheduled for, uh, your uh, November 4th meeting, your October 11th meeting, we would have the public hearing on the comp plan.
I personally would rather just get them both done on the same day. That's my personal preference and hopefully it would maybe lead to more engagement. Um, but I'd rather not put the, the plat thing off into November, knowing that we've just been waiting for them to to work on this one little part about it. And I don't know if it'll make a difference on their progression, but I would rather get that done sooner than later.
Mark, the option would be that if you wanted to do a second meeting would be October 25th, just to give you a date.
Okay. Um, the do we anticipate this comp plan and public hearing going extremely long?
I do not anticipate it going extremely long, but I also don't have any control over that. So, uh, I mean, there are things that, that you could do if you had a lot of people that participated, but last time in 2020, I think we had half a dozen people.
Yeah, and we had the sheet that had probably 12 to 15 additional comments that we had to review as well. So it wasn't just people in the building. There were comments submitted by agencies and citizens that we reviewed during that time as well. So it was pretty significant.
It, I, I, I will be a stickler for time, so we can set a limit on public comment time if we need to and get through all of that. But I, I just personally would rather get them both done at the same time. And hopefully that would lead to more public engagement if anything. But I would rather hear from the rest of the commissioners. I don't mind running late um, or long if we need to. I, I don't remember the last one Zach really running that long. It was probably more because we discussed a lot. Uh, I feel like we discussed a lot with Jamie too, from the Air Force on that one. I don't remember if that's correct or not, though.
Yeah, I, I think the 2020 comp plan hearing was one of the first meetings we had virtually post co or mid during COVID, I'm um, but there, I, I, like I said, the majority of the comments were submitted. Uh, so we had them in writing, we reviewed them, but yeah, there were at least six or seven people as well. And Jamie was one of them. So um, it's just hard to say, cause we just don't know, you know, until we get there. So um, I would definitely plan for at least some, um, some folks to come. We, we do know when we did the, um, initial options for the future land use map, um, or the we, we had a few people show up and have some comments and that turned into quite a long meeting. Um, so this would be cementing some of those areas as new UGA. So they may, you know, have come back and provide comments as well. So.
Okay.
That's my thought, sorry.
What does everybody else think about that? Would you rather split it up into, to two different meetings? Cause if we're not having a, anything on the agenda for November at this time period, um, I know that is going to the holiday period. So if we can kind of back off those meetings, that'd be kind of nice or make them shorter meetings. That'd be kind of nice. I'd rather get this work done up front, but what is y'all's opinion?
How long could the public hearing part take for Sunset Crossing? I mean.
The, a preliminary plat, you're probably looking at about an hour between, um, presentation and rebuttal by the applicant.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I don't foresee anyone coming and testifying on the plat. The, the bigger unknown is, is the comp plan. Either you're gonna get nobody or you're gonna get, or you're gonna get some, some people, um, which could be people who do or don't want to be in the UGA or the land use designation or, um, you know, some potentially some agencies providing some general comments. Um, you know, our hope would be that most of that would be have been resolved. The only suggestion I would have would be, um, if you, when you do an agenda, you have to be here as long as you have items on the agenda to review. Um, one solution could be that, um, you do a timed agenda, which is that when the agenda gets advertised, it says that one item is gonna be from this point to this point. And then the next item is gonna start at this time. So what that would mean is if you're not done with, um, one or both of those topics, you would, you would basically have to make a motion to continue the hearing, set a specific date and time to finish it so that anyone that's present would be able to come back and hear the rest of, of whatever, you know, that process would be. And so my recommendation, and I understand very much what Mark is saying. He wants to get it done, but my recommendation would not be to do a stack of, to, to put two on one night. And, and I can say that and you guys can be done with a comp plan here in 15 minutes. Because, because nobody shows up, but, but you know, on the other hand, um, if you end up with, uh, you know, a lot of discussion, you, you would need to be here till you got through both items. But you, you do still have the option of doing a continued hearing.
Can we? Go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, do we know why the petitioner wanted to delay and what they've done that now makes them ready?
Yes. Um, so the issue had to do with, um, a recommendation in the staff report to set aside area for parkland. And so what they, what we discussed was how the park impact fee ordinance operates. They have a better understanding of that. And so they want us to provide an addendum to our staff report clarifying how the park impact fee works versus a dedication. So they're willing to go forward with that, with that clarification of how the ordinance works and the subdivision review works. So, um, again, you know, that will take, in my experience, and because we do these hearings all the time, um, for other kinds of projects, with like the hearing examiner, like conditional use permits and stuff. You're, you're probably looking at hands down at least an hour of time dedicated for, for that. But, but if you wanna, if you wanna try it and, and do both of them in one night, I, I probably would do that. I would do a timed agenda. So that in the agenda, it says you're gonna start the meeting at six, the public hearing on the comp plan will start at 6:15. And the hearing on sunrise, Hunter's Crossing will start at 7:15. Now, the downside of that is if nobody shows up and it only takes you 15 minutes to the comp plan, we have to sit here for 45 minutes. As because we have to be here for the timed next agenda item.
So personally, I would rather put a timed agenda on the plat one and have that one just done in an hour. And then if we need to continue on, we can make that motion at that moment, whatever the little time it would need left to do. And then go into the comp plan non-timed. So that's an open period. It did go through it. And if I'm wrong and we go long, then I'll own that. But I don't think we are gonna go really long on this comp plan. Um, and if anything, if that's not agreeable, I'd rather put the comp plan to a special meeting in October and do the plat at our normal meeting in October.
But so just a clarification, if you go to a timed agenda, all the items are timed. So, yeah, so, but what it sounds like is what you'd like to do is get, what you're proposing to do is get the preliminary plat out of the way and then work on the, the comp plan as a separate hearing item on a special date later in the month.
It, yes, because the, I, I feel like this preliminary plot plan is gonna be pretty straightforward. Um, we've already discussed it once before what was going on. We just were waiting for this, this clarification. Um, and get this out of the way. There, there's not gonna be a ton of public engagement on that, if any. You know, where this, this comp plan is the unknown. And that's the one that's gonna be a real time unknown. So if it goes quick and fast on a special meeting, then great, we're out of there early and we're good. It also gives us a little bit more time to notify the public of it. Um, if it goes a little bit longer, it becomes a normal meeting. It is what it is, but at least the plat one should be pretty consistent. We know the timing on that.
So, um, if you did the preliminary plat on the 11th, which is your next meeting date. Um,
like 32's notice.
Uh, 15 for a public.
Uh, yeah, it, so right now, what that would do, um, by pushing out the conference of plan hearing to let's say the 25th, it will end up pushing out.
Cause we're, we're looking at doing the city council.
Yep, it'll end up pushing out the city council adoption because the first reading of the of an ordinance tentatively is identified for the 23rd. Um, so it, but, so it would push out the, um, city council to yeah, it would push out the public hearing until, um, the 20th, which is the week of Thanksgiving. And I don't know whether the council will need the week of Thanksgiving. So that would push it out.
December 4th.
To, yeah, to December.
I get what you're saying. So the comp plan, I, I mean, just a little logistically wise, we need to get that done first.
Well, I, I think the, I would suggest doing that first. The only other way to think about it would be to have your meetings closer together. Uh, so consecutive weeks instead of every two weeks, or simply go forward with a public hearing for the comp plan on the 11th thing. And go ahead and have a special hearing for the preliminary plat application on the 25th, because that's, doesn't push anything out as far as, um, a timeline for uh, an adoption schedule for the comp plan.
Personally, I think if, if we did decide to do do both events in one night on the 11th. I think the, the plat hearing should be the second event. I think the public, this, this comp plan serves the entire city. Not one developer. And it's working to shape the future of the city. I think the community should have first dibs on their time. And we do the comp plan hearing first. And the developer can wait as long as it takes.
If we did a timed one, Heather, and we said from six to 7:30 is comp plan. And then it's done in 45 minutes. Can we move on to the plat or would we have to wait till 7:30 to do the plat?
You have to wait till 7:30 because you're, you're publishing a timed agenda. So if you don't wait, you're depriving somebody an opportunity of deprocess to be engaged in the in the engagement. Um, you know, here, here's what I would say. If, if you really, really want to do it all in one day. Do it all in one day. Um. It's. It, there's kind of two, two ways I would suggest it. One is. Um, I would agree with, with Bill that you, you know, if you have the public coming, um, and you. Which they're likely would be for a conference of plan. Um, I think it's a, a service to the public to have the con plan hearing first so that you can hear from them of, of what their questions are. And at any, and, and you can still do time testimony, um, you know, two minutes or three minutes or, or whatever. Um, and at any point during the meeting, if, if the planning commission feels like. There needs to be continuation of a hearing. You can take that action. You can, somebody can make a motion and say, you know, we've got a volume of material to go through, or we. We have, um. You know, we've heard the testimony today, but we still have all this written testimony to go through. We're simply going to continue this hearing to. October twenty fifth. You can make that motion. You, you just have to make it at the actual date as part of the motion and, and move it. So you can make that call um during the hearing. Um, my suggestion would be that if you've got public favor, you should try to at least get through the public testimony because they've made time. And they've been waiting um to be able to provide that.
Yeah.
And then, you, you know, the other reason is, you know, well. It's seven o'clock, you know, we, we still have another item. We're going to move on to that hearing item for, you know, to provide. Due process to our applicant who's here too. So you, you could do that and move on to the public hearing. And you've satisfied the need to, um, whenever that occurs, you've satisfied the need to, uh. Figure out how much time you have that evening, how far you can make it through the topic and make a specific plan that's um transparent to the public about what your next steps are. The other thing you could do, if, if there was concern that, that this was going to go long, because we're starting at six o'clock. Is you could always, um. Because we have to do a meeting notice anyway, you could always bump your meeting up a little bit earlier. So that you're not going to be here later. Um, so instead of starting at six, you could start at five thirty, or you could start at five o'clock. Um, just so that if there was a concern that you've got two items, you're giving yourself. You know. Three hours instead of two hours in order to conduct business that day. So. That, those two things are not required to be together, but there are options that you could have if you wanted to do it all in one day.
One other question, if we, if we were to do a timed one in. Uh, because I never thought about starting earlier, but like, let's say we did a. And Bill, I agree with you, the, the public should have the first say, right? I'm going to be clear on this, but I'm just bringing up this hypothetical here. If we had the plat five to six. And then that's timed. And then do a public engagement from six to eight for the comp plan. Could you make a motion to the end to extend it past eight if need be?
Yes.
So to me, like. And, and I know my, my schedule is pretty flexible, so. I would rather start a little early. Get the plat out of the way and then. Give people time to get there and be a part of this public meeting, because hopefully there is engagement, right? That would be nice to have a lot of engagement. Um. And leave a large chunk of time to get that done. And then still get out at a reasonable time at the end of the, the meeting. Now, I don't know how everybody else feels about starting at five and doing something like that, but. I'm just, I would rather keep this all in one day.
It would be five with a beginning of five eight, five P M, sorry, and then just. I time limit the first one, which you guys. Seem to lean on is going to be a shorter one. Um, but we just all have to make sure that we stay till eight, if that is our end limit, and give enough time for the second topic to be discussed.
That is a really good point, Brenda, which is if you, if you put an end time from six to eight, we have to sit here till eight o'clock.
Well, we can always put that to seven and then just make a motion at seven to extend it to eight if there's public engagement, correct?
Right, but normally, um, what happens on a timed agenda is you only put the start time, and then you take whatever time it is to get through your work. So. If you wanted to do the hearing for the plat at five and then the con plan starts at six, you're just here till you're done. Or you make a motion that you want to continue the hearing to another day. You. You don't, you, I think that's a better option than putting an end time, because then everybody's going to be sitting here.
Okay, so to me, that makes, that makes sense in my mind. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
So is this all kind of working like if we don't have anything for November to meet, that that would be?
Yes, that's what I'm hoping to get out here, Don, to be quite honest with you.
Okay, now the truth is out there.
Well, and I, that's where I kind of was wondering if, if that's where it was going, but then. So we do this and then you guys come up with something we're here in November anyhow, but.
No, that, it's up to the planning commission. If you want to cancel, well, historically, both the. City council and the planning commission have canceled. In November and December, if it's. Within the week of Thanksgiving.
We might have a. Item that would be around that time for public hearing.
And. So, um, it's up to you if you want to. You would vote to cancel a meeting, whatever date that is, whatever period of year it is. And we have to put out a special meeting notice and meeting council. That's not a big deal.
I'm just going off my previous experiences over the past years and how we, we've got out of these November, December ones and got work done early or later. And I'd rather get work done early.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that too. I mean, I. Because we talk about trying to be, work with the public and, you know, the, the hearing on the plat, you hate to. No matter how you feel about it, you hate to delay it. You know, push them all the way back to November, even though, you know, we've got this. So I, I think if we could make it work, I'm okay with doing the last option we spoke about, starting early, doing an hour. For the, that one, and then. Starting the next one at six o'clock and. If we decide it's needs to go on, it goes on. Or not going on. If we decide we need to reschedule and, and do a, a part two of it, then we do that, but.
So if, if that's what you'd like to do, um, to. Have the meeting. Start at five o'clock on the October eleventh and have a timed agenda with. The sunrise preliminary plat at five o'clock. And the. Conference of plan public hearing starting at six o'clock. We can do a notice for that.
That would be my preferred option, but I would rather leave it up to the majority.
Zach, do you want to? Add anything?
No, I, 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 I'm just, we have one application. I don't know where it's going to go. But it may be looking for a public hearing sometime this winter. Um, it's. A project I brought up before, uh, regarding mobile home. It's in variance right now, but.
Let's, let's deal with that one. It actually gets to that point.
Okay, okay.
Alright, sorry about that. Go ahead.
I'm going to say I'm in favor of on our October eleventh meeting to start it at five. With that preliminary plat, be done with that by six and start the public hearing, then leave that end time open so that. We can decide if it's going long to extend it, or if it's not, end it when the public comments done.
I agree with that.
For me. Good with me.
Motion or anything for that or?
Yeah, probably should be a motion. Probably a, a motion, uh, Mark, and someone to second and then vote on it, because you're going to, you're technically changing your regular meeting time.
All right, if somebody wants to make a motion to it. To change the meeting time for our October eleventh meeting from six to five P M to discuss the preliminary plat at. Hunter's Crossing, crossing. My brain is jumbled right now, um. And then start our public, public, um. Hearing on the comprehensive plan at six P M without an end time.
That change, okay, uh, move to. Change the October eleventh more regularly scheduled meeting to start at five o'clock for. Here the preliminary plat. Timed meeting or timed. I mean. Yep, and then do the con plan at six P M.
Somebody second that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? I.
I.
The eyes have it. Thank you for that, uh, long discussion and making, helping us make a decision there, Heather, and I'm sorry that I'm jamming it into one meeting.
Nope, that's okay. That's okay. I appreciate the, the conversation, so we'll, uh, get that going and. Uh, those were the last, um, items we had for the next meeting topics.
Awesome. Well, if there's nothing else tonight, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight twenty six. On the thirteenth of September. Thank you for everybody's time. Nice seeing you again, Justin. And Zach, I promise you, if you want to have a, a, a thing about this. I don't mind getting a special, uh, session on during the winter. So if it means more housing later.
No, we'll, we'll figure it out one way. Honestly, I'm just trying to think of how that's going to work and if it lands at a weird time, but. It is what it is, so we'll figure it out. We're like, right, right now, they don't even have. Uh, of an approved piece of land, so I'm probably thinking way too far.
They haven't, they haven't got a hearing scheduled for the first part of the.
Yeah, so it, it's probably honestly going to be into next year anyway, so.
Yeah, it's, it's. It could be some, it could be sixty days before they're even ready to. Move forward and it's already the middle of September.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm overthinking it, Mark. Don't worry about it.
Well, just saying, if it did, don't mind at all, but I definitely want to try to enjoy some, uh, time with family this winter.
Yeah, no worries. We'll take care of it.
Congratulations, Justin. Who are you working for now? Uh, Lincoln County, so just down the road from you.
Are you patrolling up there by Lake Roosevelt?
I'm all over that area. I'm, uh, I don't do too many patrol, uh, or the marine patrols yet, but they're wrapping up anyways for the season.
Nice, nice. That's where my sister and brother-in-law live, right out there by Lake Roosevelt.
So you want me to go harass that property? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.